Oh, no, no, it won't be true.
Mr. Ryan, should we give that to John?
Are we on?
Yeah, you're all set.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is June 10th at 7:02 PM. We are in the lower level conference room at Town Hall. This is the Town Council public meeting. If you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Council President will be joining us shortly. He is coaching his daughter's softball playoff game, and he has his priorities in order. First up is the approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Town Council minutes of May 29th, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Motion carries 701.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Town Council Executive Session minutes of May 29th, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Motion carries 701.
And I would like to make a motion to approve Town Council Executive Session minutes of May 13th, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
One abstention.
Motion carries 701. Town Council or community announcements? Is there anybody who would like to say anything on council?
Why are you looking at me? I looked this way first. June 24th, the North Attleboro Town Pool opens, and Park &amp; Rec still has a few available spots for summer lessons camps. It's a great, great programs. Get on there before the spots are taken.
Thank you. Council Donovan?
I'd just like to congratulate the North Attleboro High School class of 2024. They graduated last Friday night. Councilor Gould, myself, Councilor St. Pierre were there. It was a wonderful ceremony and wish them all well in their future endeavors.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Town Manager Report.
Council Vice President, members of the council, here's a few notes for you this evening. A quick update on Webster Mill. Assistant Town Manager was able to attend a conference today that talks about brownfield sites. We're making headway both with DEP and EPA. Hopefully, this will lead to some tangible, actionable items for us concerning the Webster Mill process. We'll keep you updated on that, but we've got some good leads, and that's beginning to take shape at this time. FEMA Disaster Relief. I just want to emphasize, if you were impacted in any way, shape, or form, please reach out to FEMA. There are a number of ways that you can do this. You can either do it online, over the telephone. They have a 1-800 number. They have a disaster recovery center set up in Attleboro. You have to act. The deadline, and I want to emphasize this, the deadline to act is July 15th to make it. We have some numbers that have been updated. 100, Chief, how many?
172 registered.
That's right. 172 have registered, and to date, $750,000 in FEMA aid that has been delivered. So, please, if you were impacted in September by these floods, you have to act. It's not going to be something that's going to take care of everything. Insurance in a number of places, if that applied and covers, you know, it pays second to that. But you don't know until you go in. And we've also, going on to the next thing under Community Events and Communications, we did a podcast of this. We brought the FEMA team in. We talked with them about how this works, where you could go, what to do, some of the common questions, right? Chief Coleman joined me for that. That went very well. That's out on Spotify now. So, please, if you're listening to this on Facebook or North TV and you want to hear more details, and not just from me, but from the FEMA reps themselves, it's another place to check that out. So, thanks to everybody. And the link is in the report, so you can follow that as well and get it online. We did issue a fish advisory because of PFAS in the false pond and certain mercury levels. Those are out. Please check our website out to get all the specific information. If you're consuming more than one largemouth bass a day from these, you might want to refrain and cut back a little bit just because of the PFAS levels in there. So, it is touching more than just the drinking water aspect of this. Okay, and it is safe to swim in false pond. DEP confirmed that. Even though there is PFAS in the water, you can still swim in it. It's okay. Some upcoming events. Farmer's Market is up and running. Had a great start. We saw them out there, got to meet with the team out there and talk to them on a beautiful day, up and running. Thanks to them for doing this. This is their fourth year, right? Their fourth year that we've had a farmer's market here in North Attleboro. And I want to say thank you to all the people that have done that and supported. And every Wednesday between now and September 11th, you can come on out. It's going to get better each time. Just glad to have them on board and bringing, you know, something very special to North Attleboro. Richards Memorial Library, the summer reading program's underway. You can follow the link there. And they're about to have their 130th birthday coming up very soon. So, and I've been invited to give a couple remarks, and I don't know what I'm going to say other than happy birthday at this point, but looking forward to that as well. Operational and economic updates. I had the opportunity to attend a conference and a PFAS summit that was put on by Congressman Auchincloss up at Boston College. A lot of good information. What they brought together was the EPA, the Regional EPA Office, right, talking about the new mandate that PFAS will have and when it takes effect. We have five years to be in compliance. DEP was there as well. And just to confirm and let everybody know, North Attleboro today is currently in compliance with the DEP standard, right, of 20 parts per trillion, right? Now, that's going to change over the next five years and become four parts per trillion. But we are quickly moving out on that. What we'd like to do is come in, you know, and ask to be on the agenda for the meeting of the 24th, the last meeting of this session of this council, to give the council an update on PFAS, where we stand, the mediation, the Adams Well update, and make sure that, you know, everybody has a good understanding. But just, I want to emphasize one more key point. North Attleboro is currently in compliance with DEP standards for water here in town at less than 20 parts per trillion. And we do test monthly. And the water kiosk is still available. Water restrictions are still in effect. Please check out the website to see how that impacts you. And we're wrapping up. I had a nice discussion with the DPW Director today, Mr. Hollowell. Sidewalk is wrapping up. They're doing a lot of work. They're going to start paving here soon, a lot of the utility works. Have you seen Liberty Utilities out doing this? Hopefully, this will be wrapping up very soon, and we'll be doing some paving. And we're replacing a lot of those temporary patches that have taken up. But some much-needed work in going to address the infrastructure needs of our town. We did partner with Black Earth Compost. This was at no cost to the town, right? It was funded by a grant program. We've had well over 100 people sign up for this program so far for the free container to do composting. You'll, just to kind of give you a very quick overview of this program. Anytime you put food waste into your trash barrel or your bags, that counts as a part of the weight, right? And that goes to the landfill, and we pay based on tonnage, right? So, this is a part of it. Food waste is a huge part of that. If we're able to divert some of that, it saves the town money in tipping fees at the sanitary landfills. Also takes this product, instead of putting it in the landfill, it's used to create compost, right? And it's reused. So, right now, a good program, would like to see other people sign up. And if people actually sign up for the service, if we get 100 communities, right? And that would, those individuals would have to pay for that service, right? And the details are outlined on the website. They would be able to have that picked up at their home. But in the meantime, if you're up at the transfer station and you do have it, and this is very common, a couple places I've lived before did composting, you can take it up to the landfill. There's three receptacles up there for that. The mosquito control is underway. And the adulticide is specific pesticides targeting mosquitoes. If you didn't know, please check this out. It'll tell you exactly when they're spraying in North Attleboro. But under this program, you can call, and they will come treat your yard, right? They will treat your residents. So, you get up to one treatment per year. As a matter of fact, we asked Karen today to call them and check it out, and she signed up for it and had that worked out. So, it's part of the cherry sheet. If you look on the backside of the cherry sheet, you see mosquito control that comes off. That's something that we pay for as a town from the money we get from the Commonwealth. You'll see. Just check it out. It might be something you're interested in, right? You can also opt out, right? If you don't want to have the spray. Maybe you're a beekeeper, right? Like myself, I have 10 hives. I don't need them coming around spraying around the beehive. So, if that's something that you're interested in, give them a call. And again, echoing Councilor Gould's, sign up. There's plenty of opportunities for summer camps and opportunities this year. Sign up for our rep programs. Best in the Commonwealth guaranteed. Looking at financial matters, you see here that I'm notifying you of a salary expense to cover a transfer out of the Human Resources Director's salary of $18,000. That transfer is attached in your package. Quickly, I would like to recognize a couple of individuals tonight. First one, I'm going to skip ahead and talk about Tammy Belageron, who is the Assistant Town Accountant. There we go. She passed her certified government accountant exam, right? A very rigorous test. Out of the 63 that tested for this, only 11 were passed. So, Tammy was one of them, so kudos to her. And wishes the accountants out in the conference right now, so very proud of her. The next one I want to recognize is Captain Brian Kelly. And he and his family are here tonight. Chief's going to help me out with this one. But Captain Kelly graduated from the Managing Officers Program sponsored by the National Fire Academy. This is a, from everything that I've read and saw in it, equivalent to a master's degree in firefighting. It is a huge, multi-year program that goes well beyond professional development, right? It's designed to enhance the leadership and management skills of all those that undertake it. Right now, they're not taking any current applicants for this program as well. But it focuses on advancing, you know, fire knowledge, fire service operations administration, and emergency management, right? It is the gold standard in recognition of, you know, firefighting. And it is an exceptional tool to have in your kit bag. And we are indeed extremely fortunate to have Captain Kelly as a recent graduate of the Managing Officers Program. Chief Coleman.
Yeah, thank you, members of the council. To echo Mr. Borg's words, this is a very intense program. There's only three firefighters from North Attleboro that have graduated from this program. Myself, Captain Scott Landry, who was recognized here at a recent council meeting, and now Captain Kelly. Multiple years, multiple hours. Captain Kelly unfortunately was in the COVID years, so it was kind of elongated. But the other aspect of this is the family. His family's here tonight, his wife, Mandy, and their children. You are away from your family for two weeks at a time for a two-year period. So, it's a lot of toll on the family. I know that just from me being away. And special thanks goes to his family as well as congratulating Captain Kelly. So, Captain Kelly, please come on up. Lastly, all these classes, about 10 classes that are embedded within this program, and then it's followed by a capstone project, which they are required to do. And his capstone project was on officer development. So, we're going to look at that and see how we can implement that within our department. Training is very important within the fire department. And as you climb the ladder, it's even more because you're dealing with personnel, budget issues, emergency management. So, this is definitely a huge accomplishment. Captain Kelly, congratulations on your accomplishment.
Okay, Council Vice President, the next one. It's not on the Town Manager's Report. But every so often in your career, you come across an individual that absolutely makes a difference in everything that they do. I had the opportunity, one of the very first people that I met when I came to North Attleboro was Kathy Colickian. And she's joined here this evening with her family. So, we're grateful for her. But Kathy is going to retire and be on what I call terminal leave tomorrow or vacation starting tomorrow through the end of it after 22 years of service to the town of North Attleboro. Kathy is absolutely the epitome of a professional human resources director. She was my absolute rock of confidence in every personnel action. If there was something that came up, good, bad, or indifferent, I was on the phone. We, I think we talked probably two or three times every day. And not only is Kathy responsive to the town side, but also to the school side, which is not like many other municipalities. So, it's double the work, but we got double the professionalism and engagement. She, I found her as someone that cares deeply about North Attleboro, about every person that comes to work here on a daily basis to making sure that they had everything that they needed to be successful. I found her to, you know, make a difference in the lives of all of our employees. At the bargaining table, she was fair, she was honest, she was impeccable, and absolutely somebody I needed to make everything happen and go in the direction that we thought best for the town. Couldn't have done it without her. Absolutely will be missed. I don't know how we're going to do it without her. And I did just tell her earlier this evening that without a doubt, we'll probably see her again in 90 days when she gets tired of being retired. And she's saying no back then. But I would truly be remiss if we didn't take an opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for commitment to North Attleboro. And thank you for making it a great day to be in North Attleboro.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Kathy, come on up, please. So, in recognition of all your years of service, we'd like to present you this certificate as a small token of our appreciation for everything.
That is so lovely. Thank you so much.
We wish you the very best.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Let's wrap up this Town Manager's Report here. So, there are some job opportunities out there. You can see those posted. North Attleboro is a great place to work. If you think there's a place for you to fit, we'd ask you to check out the website. And that concludes my Town Manager's Report. Subject to your questions.
Questions to the Town Manager. Councilor Gould?
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious and interested in the composting situation. So, it seems like a lot of towns are doing this now. This is the thing to do. So, we need 50 more people, then we can do it. Is that?
No, it's a program that's already started. It's underway. So, we have, through a grant program, we have three toters that are up at the transfer station at the landfill. We are giving out 150 of the composting buckets that you can have at your home. So, you can fill it with those daily food scraps, whatever you've got. You know, maybe some of you cleaning your refrigerator out one day and throw it in there, and you bring it up to the landfill or to the transfer station, and you dump it in there. It's at no cost, right? If there are 150 people that sign up, correction, 100 people that sign up for the service, which is separate, right? Then they will begin a route into North Attleboro to begin picking it up, and more people that sign up. But it takes, for the pickup at your door, that will take 100 residents to sign up. And that's at a cost to the residents. We're not paying for that, but what we are doing is taking it at the transfer station.
They're out of Maine, if I recall, Black Earth? They take the compost to Maine?
They may, yes.
How did we choose? No. No, they don't. Okay. How do we choose them? Do we do an RP or just everyone's choosing them?
Not sure how it was chose, but it was a program that was, you know, sponsored with the grant program. I'll get that information to you and send that to you tomorrow.
Last question. Have we considered composting food waste in the school cafeterias?
It's a question I could bring to the schools and ask them to take a look at and how they. I know a couple of places that use and take those food scraps and work with local farms, and that are delivered. I know there's a couple of programs like that, but it's something that we can look at and discuss with the schools. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Stowe?
Have you discussed this with any of the local restaurants, perhaps, about them composting food waste?
We have not, but we can bring it up. But they are more than welcome to sign up with that service as well.
Sounds good.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
You got it.
Resident and community comment. Is there anybody from the community that would like to address the council? Certainly.
DeKeltika. It is this resident taxpayer's opinion and observation that North Town Manager is failing in fulfilling his commitment to North's residents to practice, enlist, and instill financial austerity measures for the sole benefit of the town's residents in the management of taxpayer financial resources under his tutelage. Equally disappointing, North Town Council is also failing in fulfilling their watchdog responsibilities as guardians of taxpayer public funds, which, as public servants, they are charged with the responsibility to protect, preserve, and spend only in a manner that benefits the residents of North Attleboro, whose money it is they are spending. North Town Council, by a majority vote, is guilty of rubber stamping for approval virtually every proposal placed before the council by Town Manager Borg. Therefore, this resident taxpayer is requesting, for the benefit of all of North's taxpayers, of which they approximate $10,000, that the proposed fiscal year 2025 annual budget, in its current and proposed form, be rejected by North Town Council until Town Manager Borg amends this proposed budget to include a reduction of 2.5%, where this reduction fully results in tax relief to the town's taxpayers. Again, based on my observations, the spending of our town officials is out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Please.
Hi, and good evening. My name is Tahida Mateen, a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration. And I'm just basically here to give an update of what the SBA have been doing in regards to the flooding. So, first of all, you know, we're the small agency, but we're actually the largest source of federal funding during disasters. So, we're able to assist businesses and homeowners and renters with higher amounts just to recover fully with the SBA. We do work in conjunction with FEMA. We're at all the disaster recovery centers. So, make sure, just like Town Manager said, make sure you go into the centers. While we do have those centers set up, it is important to get there in person, talk to someone face to face. We'll help you put in the application. Make sure you have all of your forms together. You can register with FEMA. You can come right over and submit your application with the SBA at the same time. I always say, before that deadline, July 15th, get into the queue, get into the process. Don't wait until the last minute. It's just not a good idea to do that. Right now, we have approved $612,000 in the state, and this county, Bristol County's, is at $372,000. So, we just, you know, the opportunity is there. For those people who have already paid and, you know, did their damages, we'll help with reimbursements as well. And just to make sure that everyone kind of has a full recovery, just use SBA as a backup plan because you are able to get, you know, higher amounts for you for those people that went through the disaster. And that's all I have. I will leave some business cards for you all just so you can take the information back to your districts. And also, I can email you the digital fact sheet and things like that if you want to send it on to your distribution list. And that's about it from me, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Could we add the fact sheet to the website if it isn't all there?
I believe it is.
I believe it is, yeah. Yeah, it's good information.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and saying this. What I, what we learned on the podcast when we did the podcast was, the SBA, don't be fooled by the name, right? It's not just businesses that you can support. If you're an individual or a family, right? You can work with the SBA as well. They will help and support money. If you can't get the direct claim payout from the individual assistance, SBA could help you with a very low-cost loan. Maybe you've already done some work, and you've paid for this, and you've borrowed to do that. You could potentially, I'm not telling people how to do this, but you could look at how you could flip that and then use this money at a much lower interest rate, maybe better terms. Give them a call. The name is misleading. It's not about businesses completely. If you're an individual, you can qualify under the SBA as well. There's more help out here for folks.
Thank you. Great explanation. See, you could have done that.
It was all about the podcast.
Thank you so much, and I'll just leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address? Mr. Donovan? Busy night. Can't imagine why.
John Donovan, your precinct seven. I guess I wasn't planning on speaking, but seeing how Mr. Keltika was coming up here, I felt as if I should do my opinion of what this council and what council and what Town Manager Borg has done in the past five years has been excellent work for this town. This town has grown in leaps and bounds and getting stuff done. It's too numerous to mention, okay? It's a positive effect on the community. We still have a low tax rate, a lower third compared to other cities and towns in the state. And, you know, we haven't had any override since 2018. There's been no mention of any override in 2018. So, I think sometimes people have a tendency to look at a glass half-empty and half-full. And I look at the job that's being done by the people that work for the Town Council, and the Town Manager have done an outstanding job, and I appreciate your fine work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Seeing none, moving on. Confirmations, we have none. Subcommittee reports. Finance. All right, so, Finance Committee has met over the past two months and gone over the following measures for the FY '25 budget. We had two separate voting meetings. Every vote on every measure passed council by a unanimous 5 to 0 vote.
That's committee.
Yeah.
Yes. Finance Committee, Subcommittee, passed by a unanimous 5 to 0 vote. These will be taken in order. Start with Measure 2024-090.
I would like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024-090 FY '25 General Fund Annual Appropriation amended.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilor Gould?
Yes, just on discussion, this is the biggest line I see. So, it's probably appropriate to say my opinion on the budget as I reviewed it, and I'll vote to approve it. I do have some suggestions for next year to increase our OPEB contribution.
Certainly.
And to focus, increase our infrastructure maintenance. I noticed a lot of lines increased for salaries and whatnot. That line only increased like half a percent. We spend a lot on infrastructure. If we take good care of it, that would, and I'm sure we are. Just something to look at for next year. And a couple of questions, if now is an appropriate time.
It is.
I understand there's not a net increase in employee count with this budget?
That's correct. We eliminated 1.5 off the town side. And, but that is going to end up based on a recent measure. So, let me correct that to 0.5 decrease overall if the animal control proposal is accepted.
Okay. All right, and there's just last question before. So, if we approve this budget, this is based on state estimates of the cherry sheet, like 30 million, give or take. If that comes in greater than 30 million, after we approve the budget, we'll find out in a couple of years. the budget, we'll find out in a couple of months what the state does. If it comes in greater, how do we spend that money? And if it comes in lower, do we need to remit and decide what gets cut, or did we budget conservatively enough?
Counselor Gould, a great question, because we build the budget based on the governor's budget proposal that we receive in January, and as you know, it's still ongoing right now, we don't know, have the final budget. It's in, it's either finishing up Senate and going into Conference Committee now, hopefully they'll have it by the end of July and signed. But we look at that, and if it's more than what we had budgeted for, it will fall to free cash in the following year. We will operate the budget based on the budget that we submitted, right? And so any excess falls to, now, if it was an extremely large amount, let's say it was a million or more, right? That might be the impetus for the council to come back and potentially open up the budget to figure out how to potentially redistribute that funding, if it makes sense to allocate that different. But usually, the, our budget, right around the cherry sheet front side, backside, is about 20, 21 million dollars. We start at 25, and then after we pay, it usually ends up at about 20. And it's 0.5% increase over the last year, based on the numbers that we have. Could be a couple hundred thousand maybe this year. I noticed they're pushing more money towards the Chapter 70, and then we've received some in charter school tuition sending that's come back to us. If it's a deficit, if it comes back far less on the cherry sheet than what we had budgeted, right? Depending on the amount, again, we would make it work within the budget we have, potentially curtail some spending in some areas that we had potentially operational room, and working with all the departments. If we were unable to do that through budget actions within the departments, I'd ask to come back, reopen the budget, and then reallocate based on the significant. But the cherry, it's within a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we've been able to absorb that one way or another. But it's an interesting note, and it's something that we're watching, and it would be nice if the legislature had their budget before we had ours, then we could go with, you know, a little more finite numbers. So, but we work with the original estimate, and we build off of that, go through our process, and then we've produced a little bit of free cash almost every year since I've been here. I think that'll be the same case this year as well, so it's not a deficit for sure.
Excellent. Good. Any other questions or comments? Just one thing I'd like to say to anybody listening, watching, watching this in the future on North TV, we are about to go through all of these measures, and you may not, you may, but you may not hear a lot of talk, a lot of questions, a lot of diving in deep tonight. We have had this before us for many months. We have had a public hearing. Finance Committee has gone through this piece by piece, line item by line item. We have heard from our Town Manager on the state of the town, at the joint address between us and the schools, preliminary budget hearing, final budget presentation, and then all of the Finance Committee's work. I have dealt with questions from the public, questions from fellow counselors. Everybody at this table has been involved deeply in this process. I'd like to thank the Finance Subcommittee for all of their work, and I would like to thank Karen for helping me remain prepared at all of my meetings, otherwise I would not be. So thank you very much. Any other questions on the first measure?
Not a question, Counsel Vice President.
I hope not.
Thank you for the indulgence, sir. I just want to go back to something that Counselor Gould said, OPEB. Because of the measures, and where we were able to move cash within the current budget, and specifically free cash, I do believe we'll be coming back in this last meeting with a proposal to add $100,000 in OPEB before the close of this year.
Great idea.
Excellent. OPEB is something that, as we move closer and closer towards fully funding some other obligations, having our reserve accounts topped off, make sure that we start funding that to the best that we can to stay ahead of it. I like to think of our town as very forward-looking in, you know, dealing with all of this financially, making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, which helps lead us to great bond ratings and everything else. So I hope we can keep that up. Are there any other questions on measure 2024-090? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-91.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-091-FY '25 OPEB funding.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-092-FY '25 Quinn Quinennial evaluation.
Give me a word. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-092-FY '25 Quinn Quin- Quinn Quin-
Quinennial.
Thank you. Quinn Quinennial evaluation. I knew it was going to be that. I said it, though. There.
So happy.
Good job. Thank you.
I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. FY '24-093.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-093-FY '25 ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation transfer.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-094-FY '25 solid waste enterprise fund annual appropriation as amended.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-094-FY '25 solid waste enterprise fund annual appropriation amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. FY '25, measure 2024-95-FY '25 sewer enterprise fund annual appropriation as amended.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-095-FY '25 sewer enterprise fund annual appropriation amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-96-FY '25 water enterprise fund annual appropriation amended.
I'd like to make a measure to approve 2024-096-FY '25 water enterprise fund annual appropriation amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. FY '24-97-FY '25 Comcast PEG Access Enterprise Fund annual appropriation.
I'd like to make a measure to approve measure 2024, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-097-FY '25 Comcast PEG Access Enterprise Fund annual appropriation.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-98-FY '25 Verizon PEG Access Enterprise Fund annual appropriation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-098-FY '25 Verizon PEG Access Enterprise Fund annual appropriation.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. FY '25, yeah, measure 2024-99-FY '25 general fund capital improvement plan for borrowing as amended.
Whole thing.
Yes.
Here we go. I'd like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-99-FY '25 general fund capital improvement plan for borrowing amended. I hereby submit the following measure to the town council for its consideration and action, that the town appropriate the amount of $2,950,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the following fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan, general municipal government projects, and the corresponding amounts specified. DPW Highway for the department project is construction, reconstruction, repair, rehabilitation, replacement, maintenance, and improvements of roads, bridges, sidewalk, and lots. The cost is $700,000. For the department DPW Highway, the project dredging improvements, restoration, and remediation of the Ten Mile River costs $1.5 million. Department Schools, project replacement, repair, installation, and upgrade of the HVAC and boiler located at the Falls Elementary School costs is $750,000, bringing it to the total of $2,950,000. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to MGL C447, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and that the town manager is authorized to expend all funds available for this project, and to take any action necessary to carry out the projects.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Counselor Gould.
Briefly, I just, I like repairing the Ten Mile River a lot, I just want to make sure it's not a $1.5 million Band-Aid. What assurances do we have from Plainville and Attleboro that they're doing their part? And what is the total cost of this project? I thought it was around 10 million, if I remember correctly.
No, this is immediate response actions that Director Hollowell felt was imperative within our portion of it. Obviously, not so much in Attleboro's, because what we should repair will impact the outcome in Attleboro. We are looking and talking with Plainville continuously on this. They've agreed to partner with us in a regional approach for this. But this was in response to the flooding that we saw last year, to take immediate action in certain areas that needed attention. The overall cost estimate that was put together in the previous examination was around $13 million, 10 years ago, I believe it was, around 10 years ago, right? So our projections, right, and we've been working with the Army Corps of Engineers, we've had a couple of meetings with them already as well, but we don't really qualify for a major waterway repair from that organization. They would probably be leaning more towards loans to us. So we're looking at working with our senator and our state representative on finding state-funded options to help do this, but the director felt that this was immediate action needed to prevent some of the most necessary actions. Again, the regional approach will still be flushed out and continue to work, because the Ten Mile is just not one single municipality.
Thank you for the update.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-100-FY '25 general fund capital improvement plan FY '24 free cash amended.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-100-FY '25 general fund capital improvement plan FY '24 free cash amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-101-FY '25 capital improvement plan ambulance receipt reserve account.
I'd like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-101-FY '25 capital improvement plan ambulance receipt reserve account.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-102-FY '25 capital improvement plan fire alarm revolving account.
I'd like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-102-FY '25 capital improvement plan fire alarm revolving account.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-103-FY '25 solid waste enterprise fund utilization of retained earnings for CIP amended.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-103-FY '25 solid waste enterprise fund utilization of retained earnings for CIP amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
I believe Counsel Slubogan said FY '25, she meant FY '24.
Oh, it says '25 here.
It says '25.
It says '25 on the agenda, it says '24 on...
On the measure.
The measure itself.
Scrivener's error.
Scrivener's error, it is FY '25.
Yep.
Do you want me to say it again?
Thank you, Counsel Donahue.
What do we say in FY '25? No, 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 hold on, sir. Point of order, sir. The measure has to say '24, you're taking this money from the '24 retained earnings.
Yep.
So the scrivener's error would be on the agenda.
On the agenda, it's a scrivener's error. You withdraw your second.
Do I?
Yes. You withdraw your motion.
Yes.
Make another motion, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-103-FY '24 solid waste enterprise fund utilization of retained earnings for CIP amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none? Yes. Counselor Gould.
Thank you. So the swap shop, can you just tell us a little bit more about it? Would it be at Mount Hope Street, or is it just like a tent for people to trade used stuff?
The swap shop concept is to have a facility where it's more than just a tent, but, you know, another man's garbage is another man's treasure, or, you know, so it provides the opportunity, so stuff does not end up in the landfill and taking up space and costing us weight, where somebody else might find a use for it. This is a past practice that our solid waste department has looked at, other communities have done this, and we think it's a very good idea, and it's going to help to reuse, revitalize, rejuvenate, think of another R-word that comes up with it, to help people not put stuff in the landfill.
Some people get really excited about that, so.
I am. I am. All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero. Measure 2024-105-FY '25 water enterprise fund capital projects for borrowing amended.
I would like to make a motion to, I would like to make a motion to approve measure 2024-104-FY '25 water enterprise fund capital projects for borrowing amended. Purpose and justification, I hereby submit the following measure to the town council for its consideration and action, that the town appropriate, oh, yay, the amount of $725,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the following fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan water projects, and the corresponding amounts specified. For department DPW Water, project design, removal, replacement, and installation of a gravel pack well system at Kelly Boulevard for $400,000. For DPW Water, acquisition of a new 10-wheeled dump truck for the water department, including original equipment and apport- what does this say?
Apportunces?
Thank you. I'm not going to be able to say that again. $325,000 total, $725,000. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and that the town manager is authorized to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Counselor Gould.
Just briefly, what is a gravel pack well system?
There's a new well, it's to replace the well at this location.
Okay. Most of the wells are on the border with Plainville, but this one's on later.
Yeah, so this is a design removal and replacement and installation of a new well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, a motion and a second, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries eight to zero to one. Measure 2024-105-FY '25 sewer enterprise fund capital projects for borrowing amended.
I would like to make a measure to approve measure 2024-105-FY '25 sewer enterprise fund capital projects for borrowing amended. Purpose and justification, I hereby submit the following measure to the town council for its consideration and action, that the town appropriate the amount of $2,645,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of the following fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan sewer projects, and the corresponding amounts specified. For the department DPW wastewater, the project replacement, removal, and installation of disc filters at the wastewater treatment plant for $200,000. DPW wastewater, replacement, removal, and installation of Headworks grit elevator- DPW wastewater, replacement, removal, and installation of Headworks grit elevator and screw at the wastewater treatment facility for two point three million dollars. DPW wastewater, replacement, removal, and installation of aeration system diffusers at the wastewater treatment, that's a lot of things, treatment facility, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, to the total of two million six hundred forty-five thousand dollars. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-four, Sections seven or eight, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and that the town manager is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel Gould.
Yes, just what is the Headworks grit elevator?
Counsel Gould, if you would, it's an auger, right? The best way to describe it is auger. It's just a big screw that removes all the grit, grime, grudge, sludge.
Two million dollars screw?
It's a big screw.
It's a big one.
Very big.
We asked...
We asked the same question.
We asked the exact same question, in the, in the exact same tone of voice for a screw. It's more, it's a giant machine.
Now, for the record, I did say auger.
Yes.
So, it, because it acts like that, and it removes all of that material that's collected from the wastewater, and removes it in sediment, and takes it out. But it's a critical component of the overall system, of the wastewater system.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. I have a motion and a second. I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries nine to zero. Measure twenty twenty-four one oh six, FY twenty-five, revolving account annual authorization amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve measure twenty twenty-four dash one zero six, FY twenty-five, revolving account annual authorization amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries nine to zero. Measure twenty twenty-four one oh seven, FY twenty-five, additional real estate property tax exemptions one hundred percent.
I would like to make a measure to approve, I would like to make a motion to approve measure twenty twenty-four dash one zero seven dash FY twenty-five, additional real estate property tax exemption of one hundred percent.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries nine to zero. Measure twenty twenty-four one oh eight, FY twenty-five, establish the amount for the town manager line item transfers.
I would like to make a motion to approve measure twenty twenty-four dash one zero eight dash FY twenty-five, establish the amount for town manager line item transfers.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing. Motion carries nine to zero. Measure twenty twenty-four dash one two two, authorization to repurpose funds, the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works Electronic Document Filing Project amended. We met on this at our last meeting and unanimously voted five to zero with the Finance Subcommittee to approve this. This is a project that we had already vetted and was going to be part of the capital improvement plan this year, but there is cash on hand to be able to complete this. This is with the help of our, our couch cushion digging.
Sherlock.
And this freed up some other funds, and this will allow them to electronically start filing all of their documents the same way the town is doing theirs.
So, I'm back.
You're back.
Thank you, thank you for standing, and I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, everybody. The budget, the budget is complete.
Budget is complete.
You kind of moved through that pretty quickly. I'm sure you already thanked everybody.
I did.
All right, yeah, I'll reiterate my thanks, Finance Committee members, town manager, all the department heads. Well done. Nice job. All right, thank you for taking care of that for me. So, you talked about it.
I did.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve measure twenty twenty-four dash one two two. Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Simmons, a second from Mr. Donovan. Is there any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed tensions? That motion passes nine to zero. Next up is measure twenty-four one nineteen, contract approval, appointment of town auditor, CLA, Clifton Larson Allen LLP for fiscal year twenty-five.
I think we are continuing this matter, sure, until we have deliberations back from, and then back in front of finance.
Okay, so, continue. It is continued. Then we'll move on to the next item.
Economic.
Who won?
Oh, thank you for asking. My daughter's team is up fifteen to five with, yeah, with not much time left. They broke it open at the very end. That's why I left a little bit early, because I figured we had it locked down. But my son's team lost, unfortunately, so his playoff run is over. But, yeah, good game. So, what was I, I was, I think, back, I was, I was out of softball mode, you know, but, economic growth and sustainability, do we have anything to report?
Just that I, I'm overdue, I have to put a meeting on the calendar with my vacation. It got set back, so I will get some dates and we'll put them in.
Bylaw. Yes, so, we had a meeting scheduled for earlier today that had to get canceled due to, I guess, procedural issues, so we'll be referring, hopefully, in new business, a measure to actually get that committee set up, and we'll meet next week before our last meeting of the year to get the first reading done. That's it.
All right, thank you, Shanahan. Is there a rules update?
Nothing updated this time.
Do we have a school committee representative update?
Only that I was incorrect the last meeting. I was thinking the regular scheduled school committee meeting is usually the first Tuesday, but it's actually next Wednesday, the twelfth, which I will have to partially miss again.
All right, so we have our school committee update. Any questions? School committee building, MSBA?
Anything happen at all?
Nothing much happening on the, the PDP, the preliminary draft proposal is in its fourth iteration right now, making its rounds to the members who should have received, so for the members of the school building committee, that's out. It's a document worth taking a look at.
All right, thank you. Any questions? You good? All right, communication, public participation, and engagement.
Nothing at this time.
Local emergency planning.
Nothing at this time.
RFP town auditor, ad hoc.
Nothing.
All right, closing those out. Move on and on to old business. Counselor, charter feedback, president's report, and counsel discussion, and votes on any collective action. Give me a second. So, I put this, I put this topic on the agenda, on the Goals and Objectives Board the last few years. I know this topic is important to at least two counselors who have brought it up to me on separate occasions throughout this, throughout this past year, Mr. Gould and Mr. Donovan specifically. So, you know, I think it's actually a potentially lengthy and wide-ranging topic, so I tried to do this efficiently over two meetings to make sure everybody could share their ideas and have this discussion in an organized and effective way. Also, important context is that in July, the Charter Review Committee commends their five-year mandated review of the charter, which would be delivered the following, the following year, following July. So, let me get into my report. I did share, so what I did was, I, I'll actually read it for you guys. I received seventeen ideas from two different counselors. I broke those proposals down into multiple items based on specific charter section that they impacted for simplicity, clarity, and actionability. And these ideas are from, from individual counselors. They do not necessarily represent the views of any other members of the North Attleboro Town Council. Broken down, I already mentioned that, broken down by charter section. And I created a summary. Again, if I didn't do the, do your, what you wrote justice, feel free to chime in on that, but I tried to be, you know, pretty straightforward and just put it on one table so that everybody could digest it pretty easily. What we received really could be broken down into five categories, one being seven different ideas to reform the roles and the shift in responsibilities of council, council president and the town manager, so there were seven of those. Five were geared towards election reform, two towards stipends, two to changes to how the president is selected, and one on the budget process. So, that was the, the overall summary. I think in terms of how I'd like to have this conversation is, open it up. At the highest level, I'd be curious if charter reform is something that is important to this council at this time, if it's something that we want to spend, spend time on. I think that's a, probably a good, good level setter. I did receive ideas from two counselors. I didn't receive them from seven, including myself, so, again, I think it's important if we just sort of think, is this, is this something that we're interested in pursuing this time? Is it something we're interested in pursuing in the future? Is it something that we're not interested in pursuing at all? That would sort of be how I'd like to start it off, and then, from there, open it up. Counselors can talk about their individual ideas, we'll go through it. So, if anybody has any comments, let's just start it off. Mr. Simmons?
So, I just, I think I made my point clear before, that I don't think we should be dealing with this until after the Charter Review has done their work. The charter was a great compromise between people who wanted a mayor, people who didn't want a mayor. The town passed that, the citizens passed that, the people that we represent passed that, and they built a process into it to have the Charter, Charter Review Committee do this job that we're now trying to do ourselves. I know that we have the authority to do it. I am not questioning that at all. I am seriously questioning whether or not we should be doing this. I would be voting no on all charter proposals until we hear back from the Charter Review Committee, and I would not support sending anything directly to the Charter Review Committee from us. I don't want to step into, on anybody's toes, and I don't want to cross lanes. I think we have a body in town designed to handle this job. I'd like to let them handle it first before we step in and try to do anything else.
I would just say, while I find some of the proposals interesting and well thought out, I, I would echo Counselor Simmons' comments, that I think we should wait until the Charter Review Committee does their job before we step into it.
Mark?
Thank you. If I may, charters are not set in stone. I've, in my professional career, I've reviewed dozens of community charters. We have a very good one. That said, there's room for some improvement. I've made a few, and another counselor made a few proposals. I'll just stay high level right now for this purposes of discussion. There were proposed changes to elections in November, staggered council three-year terms, and some proposals that would give council, emphasize council's policymaking authority, enable council to be a more effective branch of government, a co-equal participant, if you will, with the town manager. And then, these would engage the community, increase voter turnout, having people, I mean, how many people are going to vote in November? More people than in April. And how many people think about, you know, running, trying to run for office? There'd be a council election every year. New people could try their hand at it and sit through these engaging finance committee meetings, et cetera. But I'll, I'll leave it off, you know, high level there for now. I'd prefer to, to refer it to a, like a, a special council meeting dedicated to going through the language to see if, you know, what, what of these, maybe pick two or three, we want to give to the voters to make their decision, because it ultimately is the voter's decision with, with these big changes that the other counselor and myself are talking about. And I would say, give it a shot to, to get on the April ballot. That's only fair for this council. If, if the Charter Review Committee looks at it in July, that's, our term's over. That's for the next council. So, if this council wants to do anything, now's the time to get the ball rolling. I know the elections director would have to put it on forty-five days before April, so that moves us to mid-February. That said, I would, you know, lean towards referring it to a special meeting of the council to go through these. And I'll, I'll leave my comments there and see what everyone else thinks about it.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sort of going to find myself in the middle between, not just physically, but philosophically, between Mr. Simmons and Mr. Gould. Unlike Mr. Simmons, I don't necessarily think that there's anything wrong with looking at the charter right now. However, I do completely agree with him that I would not support making any changes at our level. I want the Charter Review Committee to go through their process. I was a member of the first Charter Review Committee. It, it's a valuable process. They talked, we talked to everyone that, that we could grab, and in fact, we tried to get more people from the public to come and talk to us. Unfortunately, if I remember right, we only got one person to come from the public, but we did hear from department heads, counselors, school committee members, we heard from a lot of people. That's a valuable process, and I would in no way, shape, or form want to preempt that process. Over the past five years, I've come around on the charter. I was not a fan of the charter originally. I did not support it, but I think it's working fine. I don't see anything at all that needs to be fixed. I do see some areas that could be approved. Anything can be approved. The U.S. Constitution, which I think is darn near the most perfect document ever created, has been amended twenty...
Twenty-seven.
Thank you. Twenty-seven times. So, even that, they found changes they can make, but I, I completely agree with Vice President Simmons. What I would like to see happen is some discussion, if there are any areas that as counselors we agree on, pass that along to the Charter Review Committee. If we don't agree on anything and don't want to have that discussion, I'm okay with that too. I can approach the Charter Review Committee on my own with my ideas. So, that, that's where I stand on that. I, I think it's well worth discussing, but I'm also okay with not discussing it. I mean, but the Charter Review Committee, I think, is the, the appropriate people to be proposing any changes that, if there are any, that they think we should have. Thank you.
Point of, point of information, if I may, so the charter does provide that five-year
review process, and years ending with five and zero, but it also says any other time, so that we could refer to them, and they could refer back to us, just because it's not their set-in-stone five-year mark, we could still proceed that way if, if that's, if people agree with counselor that just spoke.
Just a point of order on that. That actually has happened once, and we did refer an issue back to the Charter Review Committee, and got an opinion back from them on a Scrivener's error.
Any?
Yeah, so, just looking at this summary, my summary, huh, if everyone has it.
Yeah, we've reached out.
It, it's interesting to me that of everything, though, both Counselor Gould and Donovan have a shared opinion on Section two dash three and Section seven dash one.
Two dash... No, just kidding. Sorry.
Yeah, two dash three, for anyone at home, is the election of the president of the council, and then seven dash one is, again, moving the election to November instead of April. So, I'm just interested to hear from either of you if it's okay from, you know, why, like, what are your opinions, and if you can give more foundation as to why you chose that.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm just experiencing technical difficulties.
Dan or Mark?
Okay, I'll go first. I've actually been advocating for, oh, boy, since, I think, the second election after the first council was elected, to move elections to November because of the low turnout we get in elections. Prior to the charter, and I'm, I'm not blaming this on the charter, let me be very clear about that, I'm not blaming this on the charter, it's coincidental with the charter. Prior to the change of government, town elections were averaging about twelve percent roughly voter turnout, twelve to fifteen percent. Since then, we've been averaging about five percent. The elections in November average, in the years when it's not a presidential election, we average about sixty percent turnout. In the years when it's the president, it's eighty percent turnout. So, obviously, people will turn out to vote in November that don't turn out to vote in April. April. I would personally like to take advantage of that. When I started doing more research, I found that most municipalities in the state that have our form of government, which according to the state is a city form of government, we have a town manager and a council. That's technically a city form of government. They have their elections in the first Tuesday of November of odd-numbered years. That way, they don't conflict with the presidential election. That would overwhelm the, the election department. So, you do it in the odd-numbered years. And then, the people elected take office the following January. And again, studies have shown that there've been a number of municipalities across the country that have done this, increases turnout to about 60%. Is it a guarantee that it'll do it? No. But I think it's worth a shot. But again, to me, this is one of those things that's not critical. It's not crucial. I'd love to hear the Charter Review Committee talk to a bunch of people, get a lot of feedback on it. But if, if that seemed to be something that had some traction, let's, let's see what happens. The town would have to vote on it anyway at some point. So, that's my perspective.
Just to put a sharp point on the, the math of it, we'd, we'd be going from approximately 1,000 people a year who come to April elections to potentially 8,000 or 12,000 a year in, in November. So, we'd get much more of a cross-section of interest, frankly, people paying attention to our meetings, people discussing things important to them. Why you created that, that public engagement committee.
So, just to jump off, so when you said odd number of years, Dan, you had said odd number of years. So, then, would you then agree with Counselor Gould's Section 2 point, 2-1C, where you would do three-year terms?
No, that's where we, we would differ on that, because I, I wouldn't want an annual election.
They'd be mutually.
So, I would, I would either stick with the two-year term we have now, or I guess potentially, if you wanted, we could talk about four-year terms. I'm not sure how many people would want to go with four-year terms. But I actually think, I, I think sticking with two-year terms works. It would just be, you know, the, essentially, it would be the same schedule that we're on now. We'd just be not getting elected in April. We'd be getting elected in November. That would be the, the difference from our perspective.
My, my view on the two-year election cycle is it's too frequent. As a, because it's, it's hard on us to, it's hard on councilors to run every two years. Effectively, if you're, if you're in, if you're going to run a campaign, you're starting to run a campaign, you know, 18 months into your, into your term, right? Like, that's, that's tough to have that turnover all the time. You know, and, and also, in my opinion, again, I'll say how I feel on the whole, the overall topic, but in terms of the, of the two-year cycle and everybody being up all at once, I understand the, the reasons for it in terms of wanting to give the voters the ability that if they're dissatisfied with the council, to get rid of them. But I think a two-year term where we're all, could all potentially be removed at once makes it hard for a council to have a long-term vision, right? And it makes us a little bit weaker, I think, in that regard. So, at some point, I would, I actually would be, I'd like to see that changed. My overall view on this, though, is, is that I want to see, I want to wait for the five-year report, and there's just too much on our plate right now, like with a, you know, with a new school and potentially a renovated school, fired a station, a new senior center, PFAS in the water, like all this stuff that we're trying to get done right now, not to mention we all have to run for office again here, as I said. But like, I, I think there's some good ideas in this document that I could get behind some of them, I'm sure. But again, I, for me, it's just like, this isn't, this isn't the time to do it. I'd like to let a future council go for that. But again, I do think it's important for us to have the conversation, right? Just to kind of keep this top, top of, top of mind, right? And maybe we'll, we'll see what comes of it. I'm not trying to stop the conversation. That was just my, my two cents on it. John?
Yeah. So, I want to echo a few things that were sent here. So, number one, I agree with letting the Charter Review Committee, you know, do their job, come back with their recommendations. I don't think there's a problem with having the discussion now. If I had to choose between the three-year terms and the November elections, I would choose the three-year terms. Number one, I'm not sure, even if we had it in November in odd-numbered years, I think it's more of an apathy problem when it comes to local elections than it is a scheduling problem. I think there probably would be a bit of an uptick, but I don't know that it would make a grand difference. I tend to agree with the staggered terms. I hear a lot of people say that. I actually said it from the beginning. You know, you brought up, yep. Having two-year terms where everyone can be potentially thrown out all at once, which has not happened, but it could happen. It does make it difficult to have a long-term vision and sort of a sense of stability. For example, when, when the Constitution was written, the U.S. Senate was determined to, that they decided to stagger the terms. So, that, granted, back then, the state legislatures chose the Senate, but that's beside the point. It allowed for some referendum, but it also allowed for some stability, which I think is important.
Yeah.
So, if I had to choose between the two, I would go with the staggered terms. That's just my two cents on those.
Thanks, John. Are there comments on the others? So, if, if there's no motions or anything, I guess we can, I guess we can move on. I, I think what I would recommend, and you guys don't have to take this recommendation, someone could, you can counter me and say you want me to send, submit a report to the Charter Review Committee, and I would do it. Right? But my, my view would be, they're going to commence this process in the next year. We're all going to get invited to those meetings to participate, and I would encourage all of us to, if we have, if we want to, participate in those meetings and give your feedback. And I think we, this, the future council receives that report back. Whoever the president is, should invite the Charter Review Committee to come to that meeting and deliver their readout. And I think, you know, at that point in time, you'd have a document, you'd have five years of the, of this government, you'd have the document that's kind of summarizing the learnings of those five years. Hopefully, we get a few things settled here, right? In terms of like the big-ticket projects that we're, that we're working on. And I think that council could, you know, would probably be in a position maybe to, to propose some changes, make some changes, or pursue some changes, right? At the very least, right? Whether they're major or minor, right? And I think you've got to remember this, a, it's a big difference between a, a minor change, you know, like, I don't know, someone, you can name one of these that might be minor, but the council choosing its own president. Even that, I don't know if that would be considered major or not. I think it's, I think it's kind of, it's kind of gray.
It's major.
Yeah, it's major. So, like, again, yeah, I don't know. It's like, it's, I guess what I'm saying is, it's a big process to, to get into, to do, to do these things. So, it would make sense to wait, in my opinion, till we get back to our report.
I do have a comment on one of them. Dan, this was actually one of yours. I'm putting you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
You know which one I'm going to bring up to. You removing the prohibition on council compensation?
Correct.
I'm curious if there would be a qualifier on that potentially.
No, because I'm not proposing to compensate the council.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying...
What I'm proposing to do is remove the prohibition. So, if a future council wanted to consider compensating the council, they would be able to. The Charter would already have set that up for them. I'm not making any proposals to compensate the council.
I was just curious if...
Sitting here between two attorneys, I am learning a few things, and yes, that's, that's all I'm doing there.
I would just say, if that were to become a thing, there, there should be a qualifier that it would not apply to the current, I don't mean us, I mean whoever would.
Most municipalities who, who went that route, put that qualifier in, that it would not take effect until after the next election, which I think is a wise choice. But that, that was not where I was going with this. I'm just trying to set the, the table. That's all I was trying to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to take up a motion. I think we can just move on, right?
Okay.
If anybody has, it's a, it's a council discussion, Mr. Donahue. Is, is that...
Just wanted to clarify some of the role of the Charter Review Committee.
Now, let's, let's just, let's just move, let's just move on. Is there, is there any additional discussion from councilors, though, on the topic?
Just one last comment, if I could.
Mr. Dan, Mark, I see you guys here.
I'd just like to thank you for putting this on the agenda. I think it's valuable for the council to throw these ideas around without necessarily having a formal measure in place. But just to, just to get the idea out there, I think it's good for the public to know that we're thinking about it, get them thinking about it. I'd just like to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
And that's, that's what I was going to say. I think this was a good exercise to understand that we have this option, and this is how the Charter is changed. It's, it's done by council's vote, whether we refer it to Charter Committee or, or have a special meeting. I'm on the fence about making a motion just because other, some people haven't spoken. They might agree. I mean, I'm tempted to, I mean, why don't I make it? If it fails, it fails. I would move to send the council elects, the two that Dan and I agree on to the Charter Review Committee. So, it's the council elects their own president and annual elections in November, if the council would entertain that.
All right. I don't hear a second. Okay. So, with that, thank you. Good conversation. Again, it was, could have gone, it was, it's a, there's a lot of paths, there's a lot of ways that could have gone, because there's a lot of different ideas. So, I appreciate you guys engaging in the process and, you know, I was kind of seeing it through to this, to tonight. So, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. New business, Measure 24-121, creation of a town audit subcommittee. Mr. Borg?
Council President, this measure is back before you. I spent about an hour on the phone with the town attorney after the last reading, just to clarify process and procedure for this, to make sure that we were in good standing. And it came down, after going back and forth and looking for ways to, to do it or potentially rule it out, the town attorney came back and said, specifically because the public was not duly notified through a measure for a bylaw change, that their standing and participation in the process might be overlooked, you have to redo, refer this back, have it come back before you, and then conduct the first reading when it comes back. So, that, you know, we looked for ways. I wish we had done simultaneous action that night, you know, both a reading and a referral, but we, we did not. Even though the, the measure did say referral to bylaw on it, you did not vote that evening for it. You did the first reading. So, this, I'm asking for you to now refer the bylaw to the bylaw subcommittee for a vote.
And the first reading was known.
It's void.
Okay.
I'm renewed.
I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to refer Measure 24-121 to the bylaw subcommittee.
Second. Second to that. Pat?
Yes, ma'am.
Second to that. John with the motion. Any discussion?
Discussion. This is why people hate the government, but that's all. I'll vote yes. I don't see another option.
Any other discussion? All right. Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes nine zero, which referred to bylaw. Next up, 24-123, funding for snow and ice deficit, $29,977.50, seeking referral.
Council President, we're asking for a referral to the Finance Committee for this one to be voted out. This would come from our remaining free cash balance. Annually, you appropriate in our budget $250,000 for snow and ice. The Public Works Department spent in excess of $29,977 above that. We have that available in free cash. We ask that to pay off our balance. You have the report with you that kind of outlines the number of storms, the responses and everything. Just real quickly on this one, we averaged 47 inches of snow. This year, we had 14. So, we'd, we'd like to go to Finance and pay off our debt to snow and ice counts.
All right. Sounds good.
Make a motion to refer Measure 24-123 to the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Simmons, a second. Mr. Donovan, is there any discussion to refer?
Discussion. So, there's an informal rule we've been following. If it's 10,000 or more, we refer it to Finance. Is that what the rule is?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
It's a rule.
It is a rule.
Yep.
I would even suggest we, you know, how long has that rule been in place? Could we go up a little, you know, for something like this?
No, please, sir, John.
The reason the rule was put in place at the first council was to not have these discussions each time a measure comes up about whether or not we're going to refer it or not. It's just an automatic referral.
Yep. Of a certain dollar, of a certain threshold.
Yes.
And we, and we aligned the threshold to be exactly on par with the town manager's authority, right? And that we just voted on tonight. So, less than 20, $20,000, it does need to come to council. Anything above it, cut and dry, we're not going to have these conversations. Refer to Finance. Sometimes, you know, you could probably vote her off the floor. But again, we learned the hard way not to do, do that, because we would spend hours and hours and hours over the course of multiple meetings, literally hours and hours that were, if you keep, if you total it all up, having these sorts of conversations.
I won't push the discussion any further.
Yeah. It's a good rule. It really is. So, do I have a motion in a second? No, I do, right? Yeah. All right. I have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion?
No.
All right. Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Nine zero passes. Thank you. Measure 24-125, end-of-year transfers, municipal relief transfers. Mr. Borg?
Council President, in accordance with Mass General Law, we're asking for end-of-year transfers in the amount of $479,666.19. You have this sheet. Now, this did include a number of transfers that were less than $20,000 that you can see, actually, the majority of them. But it was, it takes far less paperwork to come to you and ask for this, but it is a high amount. But this is how we balance the books at the end of the year, where there's overs and unders in different departments. It's something we do every year. We ask for referral to Finance for this measure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I make a motion to refer Measure 24-125 to the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Simmons, a second. Mr. Donovan, is there any further discussion under referral? Here or none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This motion passes nine zero. It is referred. So, next up, we're going to move into executive session. We will not be returning to open meeting. So, thank you, everybody.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, we are moving into executive session to discuss the deployment of or strategy regarding security personnel devices, e.g., a sting operation. To discuss Measure 24-124, we will not be returning, and we will be adjourning from executive session. This is a roll call vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.